The invocation and pledge of allegiance, we will welcome Pastor Chuck Lawrence from Christ Temple Church to lead the invocation and Councilman Bob Bailey will lead us in the pledge. At this time, you may choose to rise and silence your cell phones.
Well, we can all pray. Most gracious, every one, we are privileged to be here at a moment like this. We're always at crossroads, sort of making choices, Lord, and we ask that your divine power would encompass this room or immerse this place with your presence, we pray. Because decisions being made that touch not only our lives, but the lives of so many other people. So God, we ask for divine solutions for the earthly situations, God, and we're fully trusting you for that tonight in the precious name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mrs. Atkins. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Rumbaw?
Here.
Mr. Shockley?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Ms. Wheeler?
Here. We do have a forum and we do not have any members calling in.
Correct.
Item three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption.
Councilman Shockley moves. Councilman Bailey seconds. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The synopsis is approved. Item number four, we'll welcome the mayor for his report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, members. A few items before I go into some detail about the storm response. You may have noticed that the flags are flying at half-staff on all of the city properties today. President Biden provided a, an order throughout the nation in honor of those and in memory of those 500,000 souls who have been lost in the past year to COVID-19, that this is each community's opportunity to be able to, to express our, our sorrow and remembrance of them. So if you wouldn't mind, please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Earlier this afternoon, earlier this morning, three members of council had an opportunity, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Rumbaw, Councilwoman Johnson, joined others as we had a grand opening and reveal of the Compass Center over on the fifth floor of the Police Department Building. If you're not familiar with the Compass Center, Huntington participated in the mayor's challenge by Bloomberg Philanthropies in 2018, and we were one of nine cities across the nation that were chosen as a winner of a $1 million prize. Nine million dollars was given. As I indicated, we were one of nine cities. The largest cities were Los Angeles and Philadelphia and everything in between from New Rochelle to South Bend. I think Durham was, was, was participating and little old Huntington, West Virginia. The challenge was is to create a proposal on an innovative program that was lifting a particular problem within the community. As you might recall, in 2018, in the few years leading up to that, the opioid epidemic was raging. Not that it isn't raging now, but we were getting a great deal of attention because the level of overdoses in Huntington were at the highest level per capita than any other city in the nation. To that, there was so much focus on all that was being done to try to help those who are fighting addiction to be able to defeat addiction. There was virtually no attention being paid to those individuals in the Police Department and the Fire Department, the very individuals who are trying to provide help to those who need help. It occurred to us that as we were talking about what can we do that can lift our city, but also be instructive to other cities around the nation and the world, that we would create a program addressing compassion fatigue. Imagine when you choose a profession to go, whether it be a police officer or firefighter, to go respond to a crisis and no matter what you do, you can't fix it. And with so many of the people that you go to address to try to help are people you grew up with and you see die. You can imagine what that does to your soul, to your psyche. So it was a group within the Huntington Police Department, the Huntington Fire Department and others throughout the city came together and put a proposal on how to address compassion fatigue. And we won one of the nine awards. The Compass Program helps address compassion fatigue from a physical fitness standpoint so that there can be energy that can be expended that is centric to the occupation. Exercise, Councilman Jackson, you'd understand this, exercise gets a lot of that angst out. But with all the people that go to the YMCA and all the, all of the occupations at the YMCA of individuals who attend the YMCA, police officers and firefighters have a, have requirements within their job that are unlike any other occupation around. And we need to tailor exercise regimens to individuals to be able to help them with their, with, with their job requirements. But there's also mental fitness to be able to deal with that anxiety. Imagine, once again, as I said before, if you're, have the psyche of someone who's, I am going to go and I am going to help fix this problem and it doesn't get fixed and sometimes just ends tragically, what that would do for you. So we've hired a few individuals, one who is a physical fitness specialist, another one who is a behavioral health specialist, to be able to provide support for our firefighters and our, and our police officers. The city of Huntington placed a $250,000 budget appropriation. Over $190,000 has been raised by other private entities. And the first phase of the Compass Center has, has been constructed over there. I am so proud of what this group has come to, to put together and I imagine each of the three women on council who do it and did attend will attest, this is a first-rate program that is put in place. Not just the physical edifice, but the programs that are, that are in place. What I'm most proud of is that if the challenge was, was to create something, create a program based upon evidence. So there's a great deal of measurement, that a constant level of measurement of everything that is being done. And frankly, that has had a wonderful effect on other operations within the city to teach us how to go about measuring our own enterprises. Much of what, what we're doing is that by measuring this is that we can replicate it for other law enforcement agencies, fire departments around the country and around the world. But I've also observed that there's another opportunity. And this is really where I'm pushing our Compass team. Absolutely, I want us to be able to replicate this and the other law enforcement agencies, fire departments around the country are seeking to come to us to see how we have done this. But there are churches that could learn from this. Emergency rooms could learn from this. School systems could learn from this. Because you have in the emergency rooms, individuals day in and day out dealing with trauma. Pastors, once again, not just dealing with the wonderful highs of individuals' lives, but the lowest part of, of individuals and families' lives, able to help relieve some of the stress that's, that's there. School systems with teachers and the children who are growing up in an environment of addiction and then the teachers are simply trying to help tho- those children. The teachers didn't become teachers, Coach Bailey understands this, didn't become teachers to become psychoanalysts. But that's the requirement of today's teachers. And our thought is that this gives us an opportunity to be able to see that this is replicated under so many different disciplines right here in Huntington. So what I would please encourage those of you who weren't able to attend today, contact Kathy Burns. She might give you the telephone number of Austin Sanders, but Kathy has helped lead this. Contact Kathy Burns and she'll arrange for a tour. And it's not just a tour that you all were also given an opportunity to hear about the programs. I think this would be certainly enlightening to you and the police officers and firefighters would enjoy seeing you as well. Let me talk about the storm response. On, since September 11th, September 11th, since, feels like it, February 11th of just 12 days ago, we've had three ice storms. And it has been devastating to our community. If you recall what happened in late June 2016, when the deratio came in, in five minutes just tore everything up. The winds came in, set down, tore everything up and then left. What I'm told by my counterpart at Appalachian Power that manages the region is that there was more damage in these ice storms than ever was present in the deratio of 2016. The problem that we have, the deratio came in and left and it was in the summer, so they had long days to be able to respond. The city had long days in which it could respond. These ice storms kept coming. About the time they'd start to fix something, then there'd be another ice storm come in and undo that which has been fixed. Also, the days are shorter. Don't have the long summer days, just have very short period of time from seven o'clock to in the morning to about six o'clock. Less than 11 hours to be able to go out. And then the, the elements of what you're having to work in, what you have to be able to go through to be able to get all of this. It's been devastating. Devastating for all of us in, in the community, all of our constituents. I know every one of you have, has experienced it. And I can only imagine the level of trauma that's being felt within our community. But as I say that and I get choked up about it, I also get choked up about it because I've seen once again how our community responds. Pastor Chuck in Christ Temple Church, Pastor Chuck was right here and he was telling me some of the things because I knew they'd be out. Christ Temple would be out and they were out helping dig people out and cut people out and be able to clear limbs and clear trees away. From the very east end in Guyanet, through the downtown to the end and to the very far west end, we have seen churches rise up. Not, not doing it and understand this. Councilwoman Johnson, I almost said Sister Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson, you understand this. They don't, don't do this to get out in front of a camera and say, look what we're doing. They don't get on Facebook and start thumping their chest saying, look what we're doing. But what I have heard and I've learned of so many churches and every one of your districts and all of our neighborhoods are reaching out to individuals to be able to provide, to provide help. A few years ago, a representative from another country that was doing some work with Christ Temple Church came in and presented, because Christ Temple had gone over into that, that country to build water systems and such. They came here to say thank you to the church, but also wanted to say thank you to the city. And I have a plaque up in our office that says, "To the city of Huntington, a city of uncommon compassion." And we've been showing that these last, these last days. So let me, as I have framed that, let me give you a report of all that is happening, some that you can add to, but there are some things that maybe you're not aware of. At its peak on February 16th, there were approximately 35,000 Appalachian Power customers without power in Cabell County and 18,000 without power in Wayne County. And as of today, those numbers have decreased to 7,359 in Cabell and 11,210 in Wayne. No neighborhood of the city was spared with power outages. One of the hardest-hit areas was the 25705 zip code. Comprises much of the east end. At its peak on February 16th, 90% or 9,779 of the 10,866 customers in this one specific zip code had no power. As of today, it had been reduced to 840 customers. There are 278 line crews that are currently working in the Appalachian Powers Huntington District to restore power and all told, there are approximately 2,000 line crew, line crew workers, tree crew workers and flaggers working to restore power. I've had conversations every day with the general manager of American Electric Power as to the status of what, of the response and restoration of power. We have received twice daily reports from Appalachian Power. You will begin receiving those, if you haven't seen them yet, you will be receiving those each, each day. I know Mark Bates has been keeping you apprised of a lot of what's going on and certainly taking note and trying to triage your concerns in, in, in your districts. We operate an enterprise in city government to provide service, try to make life better for other individuals. And frankly, even when we're at our best, there are people that only see us at our worst or what they perceive as worse. I can assure you that all of the 350 employees in the city, 350-plus employees at the city of Huntington never wake up a day and say, what can I do today to really make somebody else's life bad? Just doesn't happen. Appalachian Power is in the business of selling electricity. They want to be selling electricity. I want to thank Appalachian Power. Their work is far from being done, but for their partnership in communicating with us and their dedicated commitment to restoring the power to their customers, our constituents. Mr. Rinsko works with a gentleman named Brent Bush every single day and if there's a need, it's responded to as best as possible. I work with Stephen Stewart and as I've indicated, as late as nine or 10 o'clock at night, I'll be having telephone conversations with, with him. I imagine the majority of you, if, I know not all of you haven't, but the majority of you suffered some power outages. Know how, we know how frustrated our residents are. It's been cold. And a lot of them are worrying about their families, their children, their elderly parents. That's why we have been working as hard as we can to be able to restore the, the power. I understand 10 out of the last 11 days, my wife had been out and I had been out of power, without power. And it's been cold. Fortunately, I was able to get into a hotel room for, for two nights. The wonderful thing was be able to get into a hotel room for two nights and have a little bit of warmth and a warm shower. The bad thing was, was then having to go back into the cold again. Our power was restored last night at six o'clock. We know what everybody is experiencing and understanding that there are some individuals that, that still are experiencing no power. City operated two warming stations to response, in response to power outages. The A.D. Lewis Community Center opened a warming station on February 12th and was used as a warming station Monday through Friday of last week. In the six days and 42 hours that it was used as a warming station, seven people came in to get warm. That's telling me that there are other things going on in the community where people aren't bragging about. Mountain Health Arena also opened as a warming station. And in the three days and 30 hours it was used as a warming station, 11 people came in to get warm. And as I indicated, there are private warming stations as well in other churches. I know of a church in Guyanet, I know a church downtown, I know of a church in the west end and I know certainly as I mentioned with Christ Temple Church and other churches have, and I'm sure each of you know of several as well. There's a difference between, a lot of people don't know, between warming stations and emergency shelters. The Campbell County Homeland Security Committee coordinated the opening of an overnight emergency shelter at New Baptist Church on 28th Street. It was opened on Tuesday of last week and closed on Saturday because everyone who was using it had left by Saturday. Huntington Fire Department helped with volunteer, providing volunteer staff, helped the volunteer staff. Huntington Police Department provided around-the-clock security at, at the shelter. Public Works Crew worked for 11 straight days. A total of 42 Public Works employees, all eight Public Works divisions participated in the storm response, representing more than 2,100 hours worked. The Public Works employees who were not directly involved in the storm response were picking up household garbage. Household garbage was delayed only one day during the 11-day stretch of harsh winter weather that we experienced. I know that because it was on my route that was delayed. But what you come to understand, if you're freezing your butt off and you're just concerned about other things, I didn't think about, did my garbage ever get picked up until Friday? And I looked out on Friday and, oh, it's gone. I found out it was picked up on, well, I won't say what, well, I just did, Thursday. It wasn't picked up on Thursday. It was picked up on Thursday. Other areas were delayed due to downed trees. The garbage service was delivered to those residents once the roadways were cleared. Public Works Crews removed 94 trees from public roadways during the 11th day stretch of storms. 20 trees were removed after the first ice storm. 68 were removed last week after the second ice storm. Six trees that fell early this morning on Mallory Court were removed today. More than 700 tons of salt were spread on city roadways during the 11-day period. Also understand, once it gets under a certain temperature, below 18 degrees, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. And the early time when we were laying salt, when it was raining, it was just washing it away. So there's also some experience that we come to understand is what's going to happen and under what can, what conditions. In our view though, while it started to warm up some today and things are melting, in our view, the storm isn't over. In large measure, we're still in storm response mode. As was the example of what happened this morning, six trees falling down. Because as the ice is melting, we're seeing large branches and trees fall as evidenced by the six trees that fell earlier this morning. I look back behind my house, there's a wooded area and I'm seeing the, the branches that are just hanging up in the trees and they're coming crashing, crashing down. Fortunately, they're a little bit away from, from the house, but you know, they're also taking out lines with them. However, we are developing plans to assist residents during the storm cleanup. So we're not waiting to, to respond to cleanup until after the response. We're, we are shifting gears right now, but we are not 100% mowed into, into storm cleanup because of so much that is still going on. Under normal circumstances, on any given day of the year, under normal circumstances, our ordinance sets forth that there are three ways in which residents can dispose of yard debris. One is by bundling limbs and branches that are no more than four feet in length and weigh no more than 75 pounds, setting the bundles out with their weekly household garbage. That ordinance does not place a limit on the number of bundles that can be set out each week. Now, this is under normal circumstances. So on first week of May, when it's pretty and nice and you've gone out and you've done some pruning and everything and you have stuff to get, that's what this ordinance was set to, to address. Each household by statute is entitled to one free pickup of uncontained rubbish each month, each month. Each household gets one free pickup each month. 12 a year. We will pick up that uncontained rubbish each month as long as it does not exceed the size of an eight-foot truck bed. Larger pickups are permitted, but a fee is assessed by the Public Works Director. Some people just have to get all that stuff out, but some people, if they're smart about it, they'll put some out. It'll be gone and then next month and be gone. But there are some circumstances, I know, that we're requiring it all to, to go out, but if it's beyond the eight-foot truck, truck bed load, then we will assess a, a fee on, on that. Residents can bring debris to the trash drop-off facility on South High Street in Guyanet. And the facility is open 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Monday. And the facility is open 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the third Saturday of the month. Anybody who is taking this up to this, to this facility, must show proof of residence and a current refuse fee paid receipt at the facility. Driver's license and the receipt showing that they've paid the refuse fee. Now, that's when we're dealing with normal circumstances. This is anything but normal. In any enterprise, when you're going through something, what you're always doing is evaluating, what more do we need to do, constantly as you're doing, in the midst of it, and then after you do a full SWAT assessment. I've instructed our Public Works Director to provide a comprehensive plan for assisting residents with debris removal. He's already started coordinating with other agencies that Public Works partners with on a regular basis to make this plan as quick and efficient as possible. The idea is get into a neighborhood, get it cleaned up, let you know, your constituents know when we're coming through and the schedule that we will be coming through. I've asked Mr. Ensco to provide me this, by late this week, I'll evaluate it, and then I'll make a decision, and then sometime early next week, I will be making an announcement as to how we'll be proceeding with it, and certainly each of you will be advised of that. As I indicated, we, in the small instances and certainly the large instances, we undergo an enterprise review. This isn't our first trip to the rodeo. The new members of council, congratulations, you have been blooded. You are officially initiated as members of City Council. I have, since I've been mayor, we've had two serious weather events. One in 2015, where we had made the fatal mistake in the middle of March, said, well, we were able to dodge the bullet this year. It was the first meeting in March. We were able to dodge the bullet this year, and as though the Lord was looking down upon me and said, now, don't go getting so big in your britches, Steve. We had three snowstorms that came in right after one another. The temperature, I don't think, got above 10 degrees, and it was just, and as mild as that winter was, everybody thinks that that winter was just awful. As, as we're dealing with these things, there's a joke that was told to me years ago that I keep trying to hold on to, and some of you may have heard me say this, and it's corny as can be, but there's a lot of truth to this. You know the difference between minor surgery and major surgery? Minor surgery is when you're having it, major surgery is when I'm having it. The difference between a minor problem and a major problem? If it's in your district, it's major. If it's in his or her district, it's minor. It's in my district, and you can only imagine those households with the power out or if the power is back on and the trees are still, are sitting out there saying, when are you going to get this picked up? Reality is, this is going to take a while to get this cleaned up. We've tailored cleanup plans for the deratio in 2012, flooding in 2016. Frankly, I even forgot about that. In 2016, when the flooding in the eastern part of the state, Enzlo Boulevard came through, and once again, a city of uncommon compassion, it was amazing how the community came out for the Enzlo Park neighborhood to be able to clear that out. As we tailored these and we assessed these, this is not going to be any different. We'll go back and assess what more that we need to do, and we welcome your comments, your experience and everything. But understand, after you've been through a couple of these things, if it appears that we're indifferent, it's not. It's just, we've been through this a bunch of times. I knew eventually it's, there's going to be some things that are going to be melting, but guess what? Right after that, there's going to be trees that are going to continue falling, there's going to be flooding that's going to be coming. You know, and I'm not asking for a pity party for anybody. I was the one that signed up saying I wanted to run for this, as each of you, you did. This is, in a favorite movie of mine, this is the business we have chosen. Now, we'll see who of you understands what movie that was, and you can tell me later. Here's how you can help. You can help manage expectations with the public. Now, this is hard. This is hard, particularly the first time that you've held elective office. It's hard. Remember, major surgery, minor surgery. Here's what I've learned over the years, is that acknowledge the brutal facts, acknowledge the brutal facts, have an unending faith in our ability to prevail. That's the way we run things in my administration. I'm not going to run from the problem. I'll state it for what it is, and if we've screwed up, I'll say that we've screwed up. But I also know, and my experience is, that on down the line, we find a way to be able to prevail. Scriptures say, all things work together for good. And I won't preach on the other part, but all things work together for good, but there are some conditions associated with that. Come to my Sunday School class sometime, and I'll help you with that. We have significant damage around our 17 square miles and 197 miles of maintained roadways. We're still responding to the damage and are transitioning into cleanup mode, as I indicated. The cleanup efforts will not be completed in one week, it's not going to be completed in two weeks. It will take, it will take several weeks, and we will provide you with regular updates as we progress. My expectation, not my goal, my expectation is we will bring you a plan saying when we will be coming through your neighborhood, and we will make sure, we've done this before. And when we do that, we'll make sure that the world knows what we're doing and watch. Everybody will bring everything beyond the torn-up trees, but we will come through and clear and clear this out. But it's going to take some time, and you can help us manage these expectations. I've got an even bigger one to ask of you. You are now an employer of over three, you're on the Board of Directors of an enterprise that employs over 350 people. People start running down the operations. I take this personally, not because they're saying something about me, they are criticizing our employees. And just think what our employees have been doing these last 12-plus days. On the coldest of nights, on the wettest of nights, on the slickest of roads, they're out either cutting trees down, or laying salt, or trying to just get people out of homes. I really don't care what anybody says about me, but don't say a blessed thing about the employees of the City of Huntington. They are the hardest workers, they are public servants. And all I ask of you is that if they want to criticize, then lay it on me, saying, well, it's on the mayor. If you haven't noticed, I've got some pretty broad shoulders. And I also have some scars. Comes with the territory. Point to me, but don't point to our employees. They don't deserve it. They didn't sign up for this like you and I did. Yes, they get a paycheck, but what they do, day in and day out, they deserve whatever civilian Medal of Honor that we can provide every one of them. That might be something, Madam Chair, that we figure out what to do. Also, if you're driving by some city employees, slow down, beep your horn. If you can, roll the window down, give a thumbs up, not another finger. And just beep at them. That lifts their spirits so much. And if you have a chance, just to say, I'm on City Council and want to thank you for your service. Just see them, just lift up. This email was, or this text was sent by a salt truck driver in the Street Division after a long day on Thursday last week, and he sent it to Jim Ensco. "Today on my route, we received so many waves and thumbs up from the residents. It made 10 hours of salting and plowing enjoyable. It feels good to know they appreciate us. Just thought I'd pass that along. Makes me feel good at the end of the day." So, we're going through a tough time, but I wouldn't want to go through a tough time anywhere else but Huntington, West Virginia, because we know how to stand with one another, back each other up. And if there's something that we need to be doing, let me know. If you can't get hold of me, then call Mark Bates. You call me, I'll be there in a hurry, and that you can never worry. Ain't no mountain high enough. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, for going on so long, but there's a lot to cover.
We thank you, Mayor, and we-
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Serious thanks to Mr. Ensco and his extraordinary team for their response in this unprecedented weather emergency. Thank you all very much.
This went longer than my speech the other night.
Questions for the mayor? All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance, 2020-049.
An ordinance of council enacting Article 116 concerning the management, adjustment, and resolution of small claims and setting guidelines for the payment of such claims.
Motion to adopt.
Councilwoman Rumba moves.
I'll second.
Councilman Shockley seconds. Welcome back, Mr. Dameron.
Thank you. Good evening. Scott Dameron, City Attorney. The ordinance, as Ms. Atkins read it, basically defines what we're doing here. We're creating an ordinance which sets guidelines for the adjustment and resolution of small claims against the city, which can be anything from potholes to minor vehicle damage and anything along that line. The limitation would be $2,500. About everything else would go to the insurance company unless it's something that's not covered by insurance, and then we would come to City Council for approval to settle any kind of case that's involving a larger amount. This just involves the smaller claims. We get about 30 a year. We paid about, we get about 50 a year. We paid about 11 last year, and the average amount paid was $945. So what we're asking you to do is approve some guidelines for us to consider and adjust these claims, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dameron? Mrs. Atkins, was there any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, Finance Committee?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, the Administration Finance did meet and forward this to full counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll for a vote.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumba?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes. The ordinance is approved. Item number six is a resolution, 2021-R06.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the construction of a retaining wall at Military Road within the City of Huntington.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the ordinance, of the resolution.
Councilman Bailey moves to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Anderson, was that you? All right, thank you. All right, and Mr. Ensco is here to speak.
Madam Chair, members of council, before you, if the resolution is approved, we'll allow the city to proceed with a slip repair at the intersection of Military and Holswade. Happened about nine months ago. It's a pretty intensive slip. Will be a pound lagging wall of approximately 100 linear feet, as well as 290 linear feet of bed reconstruction along the creek. The road will be replaced, as well as proper curbing. We received eight bids, the lowest bidder being Thaxton Construction out of Sistinville, West Virginia, in the amount of $199,000. As I said in the work session, we did receive one bid from Huntington, but it was for $280,420. So it's well above the 4% preference. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Ensco?
I have a quick one. Mr. Ensco, that's my district, so thank you for that. It is a bit treacherous there. Once we get everything going about, do you know how long it'll take to get it finished?
We have allotted 180 days.
Thank you.
But we do not anticipate that.
Other questions of Mr. Ensco? Mrs. Atkins, was there any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, would you like to give your committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, Administration Finance did meet and forward this to full counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? And then we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item seven is a resolution, 2021-R09.
A resolution for budget revision number five of the fiscal year 2020-2021, general fund budget.
Councilman Jones, do you move?
Yes, I move, we accept that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Bailey, seconds. Welcome back, Mr. Arthur.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. What you have before you is the fifth state revision for your approval. Starting with the revenue side, we have an increase of $500,000 for federal grants. This is to account for the revenue of the CARES Act relief assistance received for the civic arena. Jumping down to the expenditure side, there's a proposed increase of $227,900 for other grants, which will fund two projects. Number one, $210,000 will be used to fund the remainder of the FY21 expenses for the Bloomberg Grant Program, and the remaining $17,900 was from a contribution made by a private donor in FY2020 that was not fully expensed. This revision will allow us to expense those funds in this current year. Contingency will be decreased by $305,424. This is to offset the increases in both grants and Public Works. The Public Works Streets and Highways Division is seeking approval for a budget increase of $77,524. This will fund two new positions, a laborer position and a truck driver position. These positions will be responsible for specifically the Central Business District for cleaning, curbs, painting, potholes, and et cetera. Finally, the state has transferred $500,000 under the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act. This is to provide support and assistance to the Mountain Health Arena during the COVID-19 public health emergency, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, if I could.
Yes.
The two people that you're going to hire for the new position specific to that one
area, would they ever at any time be able to work outside of that area?
I would have to, for Mr. Ensco on that.
Meaning in any other districts, or is that not possible at all?
Absolutely, it will be possible. The mayor's vision has always been to have a crew that specifically works in the Central Business District from First to 16th, from the river to Seventh Avenue. We have many, many calls throughout the summer and through the spring and the fall in the downtown area. We also have a downtown cleanup crew that goes through there. So we hope that the two new individuals will allow the crews that we have to expand into other neighborhoods. But we always go where we're needed, but there are specific duties will be in the Central Business District as far as curb replacement, pothole repair- the Central Business District as far as curb replacement, uh, pothole repair, graffiti removal, which is a major problem in our downtown area, et cetera, everything, cutting grass, trimming trees. I mean, I could go on forever.
I, I would like to be able to see that grow into being able to reach other areas, so, so we appreciate that for sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ensco and Mr. Arthur. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Arthur?
Yeah, one question.
Yes, Councilman Anderson.
So how much money is, is, uh, involved with the Bloomberg part of this?
Um, the, the, the total amount is the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. There was a private contribution made last year for twenty thousand. Um, we only expensed part of that, so seventeen thousand, nine hundred is the remainder, and the two hundred and ten thousand dollars is the money specifically from the Bloomberg grant. So all of it is Bloomberg.
Any other questions for Mr. Arthur? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Atkins, was there any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley, would you like to give your committee report?
Yes, ma'am. Again, the Administration Finance Committee did meet and forward this to full council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Shockley. Uh, is there any further discussion on this item? All right, then we will vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item eight is a resolution, twenty twenty-one R zero eight.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Mark Bates to the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption?
Second.
All right, Councilman Bowen moves to adopt. Councilman Anderson seconds, and Councilman Bowen, would you like to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, the Personnel Committee has reviewed this appointment and forwards to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mrs. Atkins, any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, then we will vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Bates, the resolution, resolution is approved. Item nine is a resolution, twenty twenty-one R thirteen.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Mike Shockley to the Cavill-Huntington Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption?
Councilman Bowen moves to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Mount seconds. Councilman Bowen?
Uh, Madam Chair, the Personnel Committee has also reviewed this appointment and forward to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mrs. Atkins, any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, I'd like to comment that hearing Mr. Shockley talk about the position that he's held on the CBB was very inspirational. Um, it was really great to chat with him, and I learned a lot from him just from the short time we, we chatted, so, well done.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman Mount.
Thank you.
All right, uh, then we will vote. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved, and of course, we congratulate you, Councilman Shockley.
Thank you.
Item ten is Good and Welfare. Mrs. Atkins, were there any items submitted by members of the public?
No, ma'am.
Excellent. Uh, fellow council members, I'll begin to my left, Anything for Good and Welfare. Councilwoman Mount?
Yeah, um, just a quick comment, um, to almost tag on to what the mayor said, uh, these days have been very difficult, uh, for some worse than others. I live in that two-five-seven oh five zip code and saw a lot of damage myself, um, from leadership to the communications, to the first responders. Uh, I commend everyone for their hard work. It was really something to witness. I work at the hospital, I was, I had, hospitals don't close. Um, I was there every day, driving back and forth, and every time I went out, I saw crews, I saw, I heard sirens, I saw vehicles. It was, the city did not stop, and it was really just inspiring to watch. Um, I've worked with Jim, I want to speak specifically about Mr. Ensco. When I was on the Neighborhood Institute, we did a project where we wanted neighborhood watch signs put up in our neighborhood, and he told me, oh, a few weeks, they were up in two days. Um, so when he tells me that Military Road will be fixed, when he aims for a hundred and eighty days, I have no doubt that he will hit that. Mr. Ensco, and you know, not a day went by where I didn't think about your crews, um, what they were going through out there. Um, I prayed for their safety, I was so very grateful. Um, every time I was out, trees being cleared, roads being plowed, salt being spread, people working, um, I know that we're not through this yet, um, but I wanted to publicly thank you for the relentless, which is usually a word I use to describe my children and how they nag me for things, but in this case is positive, relentless, hard work, um, that has gone into this, so please pass along, you know, my praises, crews, um, all the first responders, everyone. It was, it really was amazing to watch, so, and my trash got picked up on time. I was, I put it out there thinking, hey, we'll see, and it did, so thank you. Feel free.
Any other members on?
I, I would like to speak, uh, I, I would just like to say how proud I am to work with an organization like the YMCA. We took the opportunity to waive the guest pass, uh, and allow folks to come and charge their mobile units, as well as, uh, take showers. We talk about coming in, out of the cold, but it's very important to be able to take a shower as well, so it, it, it does make you proud to be part of this group and a part of the organization like that. And then also to something what the mayor said, as far as the Compass Program, reaching out to the teachers, I, I heard or read the other day, where sixty-five percent of our youth are, uh, have attempted suicide, so I can imagine how teachers are feeling in, in regards to that. So, so I, I feel a program like this could benefit them as well to just kind of offset the issues of not being able to be there for our youth like they're used to, used to doing, so, um, I like the idea of being able to see that program grow into other areas.
Thank you, Councilman. One else here, now, to my right, Councilman Shockley?
Yeah, um, I've had, uh, the privilege of knowing Mr. Ensco for probably fifteen-plus years. Uh, the man is professional, how he addresses us, the four-plus years we've been here, uh, Chairman Wheeler. You know, can't say enough about his department, his employees, to echo, um, what Councilwoman Mount, uh, said. Uh, but one thing that the mayor did mention, um, is where you start into this, um, kind of more cleanup mode versus response mode. Um, instead of being a councilman that sits here, um, waiting to see what the Public Works Department is going to do in my district, uh, I just want to reach out to you, Jim, and, uh, I will coordinate any efforts, uh, with my contacts through the district, uh, to help, um, you know, whatever you need, um, instead of just sitting back like with a handout, seeing when they're going to get this done. Um, I want to be proactive with you and your department and my district, so, reach out to him anytime.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bailey?
I just want to thank Jim Ensco and all the city workers. Thank the mayor. Y'all do a wonderful job, you know, it's, it's tough out there, so just keep up the good work, you're doing great, far as I'm concerned.
Councilwoman Johnson? No. Back here? All right. Thank you. I, I would thank Jim Ensco as well, but I don't want to say anything else nice about him because his head might get too big. We, we certainly appreciate you and, and give our sincerest thanks. Um, uh, thank each and every one of you present for a productive meeting and all those who made time to join us at home. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman.